...$255,000 deficit in next year's drug court budget. Furthermore, the state has flat funded the drug court case management budget for the last three years. Consequently, if left unfunded, this deficit will significantly compromise our drug court program. Quote, "The primary mission of DHHS is to care for patients for Maine's most vulnerable citizens," end quote. Surely, drug court clients are among the most vulnerable citizens. I dare say almost every person in this room either knows or knows of someone affected directly by addiction to alcohol and/or other drugs, a terrible but treatable insidious disease that knows no boundaries. Given the high prevalence of substance abuse among incarcerated individuals, the inability of most incarcerated individuals to receive adequate substance abuse treatment while in prison, and the success of Maine's drug courts, I urge you to eliminate this deficit in the drug court budget by increasing the SAM's office budget by $255,000 and $305,000 respectively in the first and second years of the biennial budget. Thank you.
Representative Malaby has a question for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Drabich. Dr. Drabich, can I infer that prior to 2011, these funds, which are particular for the case manager position, had come through OSA, the Office of Substance Abuse?
That is correct. The funding was through OSA and now it's through SAM.
And it has been omitted from budget, the DHHS portions, which SAM has been omitted from?
Well, there's a deficit created by virtue of the fact that that grant expires September 30th, so that decisions of enhancing case management during that period of time will have to be reversed and go unfunded.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what you're saying, enhancing. Does that mean that we are no longer employing, we don't have the money in the budget for the case management?
Then we'll never be able to employ the same number of case managers in the drug court.
I'm sorry, I did that to you. I'm here. What about you? I got talking to Senator Gates.
I would do the same if I could.
I was not trying to cut you.
The enhancement grant of $1.5 million over three years allowed the drug court program to expand the number of case managers it had. I'm trying to make it very simple. That money's going away. Unless it is replaced, those additional case managers go away. The scope of the drug court program shrinks because it doesn't have the personnel to run it. The program gets smaller. We save less money. Lord knows, the correctional system has its own problems, right? So to the extent we can shrink that number of patients, it's very important money saved for the state.
Thank you. Any others?
May I make a comment about something else that's been talked about, and it's not my testimony, it's not mine, the word abuse. When people talk about the abuse of medications for addiction, they tend to think we're talking about taking too much medication, taking more, taking the wrong dose, not following what's prescribed. Both methadone and buprenorphine, or Suboxone, have high risk and abuse potential for sale so that I can go buy some other drug. So patients who are prescribed Suboxone, sell it, go to pharmacies, rob it to sell it, to fund their own addiction. So I just want you to broaden your thought about the word abuse when it comes to taking medication, especially medication like methadone or buprenorphine, which has a high street value, is what the common phrase is. Or there's not much street value for antihypertensives or antibiotics. But it's an important issue, and it's really critical about buprenorphine if it has high street potential. And I wasn't here to testify about the methadone question, but I think you need to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Hamilton?
Senators Hamper and Reiki, and Representatives Cuttine and Rotundo, members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs and Helping Human Services. I am testifying for Eric Brown, a family physician, active in primary care, office treatment of addiction. I speak in opposition to the recommendation eliminating main care reimbursement for methadone treatment of addiction disorders with the promotion of buprenorphine instead. I'm a very strong advocate for getting Suboxone out to patients with addiction to opioids. I speak around the state encouraging primary care doctors to start treating their own patients where they live with Suboxone when it's clinically indicated. Note that those of us who treat with Suboxone have no more available slots in our clinics. There is no resource, no other doc stepping in to fill the void. Sadly, Suboxone is not a panacea, and studies support that fact. In my practice, we've treated many patients who, after being trialed on Suboxone, failed and needed to transition to methadone. In some cases, it took a few years before the individual was able to take down and off methadone. Suboxone is effective medication for about 40 to 60 percent of opioid addicts. Sadly, it tends not to be effective choice for those on really high doses of heroin, of codeine, or multiple drugs of abuse like benzodiazepines such as Valium. Over 40 years of solid national data establishes these facts. Methadone has been the most studied drug in history. I strongly disagree with anecdotal statements made without reference to real studies that methadone treatment doesn't work and is not worth the money. This is not what studies have shown or what I have observed. Sure, there are failures of treatment, just like all other chronic diseases we treat. Obviously, the squeaky wheel, the most difficult, struggling, and yes, sometimes unconscious patients, that take much of our time and energy, stay in our memory, while those doing really well and not hassling us are forgotten. I even hear frustrated ramblings about all our difficult patients by my own experience staff, seemingly making it sound like the majority of patients were not doing well. The facts, our actual patient review show the large majority are doing well. This demonstrates that patients doing well on methadone or Suboxone become out of sight, out of mind versus those who are troublesome, who stick in our memories. Both of these medications work for many people, but not all. Most are helped to move toward addiction recovery using these meds and function well in our community. They work, provide for families, and are out of jail over two to 15 years, not months. Many get off the medication totally. Some patients require a slow transition using a process that includes initial treatment with methadone, then solely tapering and transitioning to Suboxone, and then slowly tapering off of all medications. I have many of these people in our practice who are still in remission, but they needed that initial methadone. Patients who are forced to leave treatment before they are ready medically have a much higher risk for returning to street drugs, stealing, neglecting families, and not uncommonly death by inadvertent overdose. Death cures addiction. If methadone treatment is not an option, we will have more dead patients. I hope that we do not act like these patients are expendable, like we once did with AIDS, victims of the AIDS.
Thank you very much, Representative. This actually is a question of Senator Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. Good to see you again this week. I know that this is not your testimony, but I'm asking if your question remains, you were the director of Public Health and Bankor, GA. As you've been here before, there was some testimony about how when individuals were removed from Medicare a couple of years ago, GA was picking up the cost of methadone that was prescribed, which resulted in increased costs to Bankor. Is that right? It was about $21,000 increased cost to the Bankor GA budget?
So there is a increased cost. We are, so our GA manager actually called the state to get verification on whether or not we were required to pay for those medications, and we were told we were required to pay what main care pays for. So if a patient came to us and they needed that medication, we were obligated to pay for that.
And so as I understand it, then if main care is not required to pay for methadone, then this would create a lack of an avenue through GA as well to give that treatment?
That is true. They would be obligated to pay for Suboxone, and I believe, and perhaps a pharmacist person can address this, but the cost is two or three times the cost of methadone. Methadone is far cheaper than Suboxone, so our actual general system cost would go up quite a bit if that became the case.
Because of the Suboxone?
Because of the Suboxone.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you for being here, and please tell Dr. Brown we appreciate this testimony. Thank you. Eileen Fingerman, and then Margaret Craven, and then Jeff Tyner.
Good afternoon, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eileen Fingerman. I live in Sydney, and I'm a family physician in one faculty at Maine Dartmouth Family Medicine residency here in Augusta, Maine. I'm also submitting testimony on behalf of Dr. Steve Bean in opposition to the bill, as well as testimony on behalf of the American Society of Addiction Medicine, the Northern New England Society of Addiction Medicine, the American Psychiatric Society, the Maine Association of Psychiatric Physicians, the American Academy of Addiction Psychiatrists, and the American Osteopathic Academy of Addiction Medicine. As a family physician who's practiced in Maine for the past 25 years, I'm greatly concerned about the proposal to end coverage for methadone for main care recipients. I certainly applaud Commissioner Mayhew and her goal of integrating family physicians, and I absolutely embrace the concept of integrating treatment into primary care offices and desire to ensure that patients receive primary care. However, currently, as you've already heard, your sympathy is currently not the support to for doing so. I am licensed to prescribe hundreds of Suboxone patients, and I'm currently treating no patients. The office that I work in currently does lack the organizational infrastructure and administrative resources to provide this care to our patients. As you may hear by other people, prescribing Suboxone to patients is not the same as simply writing a prescription for blood pressure medicine. It involves a lot of other organizational structures. Typically, patients who, if their treatment is done well, they're required to attend regular counseling, they're required to have random urine screens, they're required to come and have their medication counted regularly, all of which requires a great deal of administrative coordination, both at the pharmacy, with the urine screening, and with the counselors providing the regular counseling. Dr. Steve Bean is, in his letter, he picked up that he is one of two prescribers in the entire Franklin County, and he is the only one taking any of the patients, and that is in a very limited way. His average wait time is months to one year to get into his practice. As Commissioner Mayhew articulated, drug addiction leads to many medical complications, all of which then substantially increase the cost to main care. The reality is that for many folks who are on methadone, if and when coverage ends, they would have little option but to buy heroin on the street. In addition, of course, to the direct cost to those folks, for somebody who's relapsed with all the permanent medical costs associated with many indirect costs, both monetary and otherwise, that will only be realized years later. It's well known that children who grow up in a household with an addictive parent suffer much higher rates of illness, both in childhood as well as into their adulthood. If you have any questions?
Yes, Representative Sanders. Thank you. I don't really have a question, but Dr. Bean and I went to the same residency program in Michigan, so we use to say hi.
Yes, I know. Thank you.
Representative Sanders. Thank you. So your license to be a Suboxone physician, is that what I understood?
Yes, I've been prescribed with Suboxone for five years. Currently, I'm not prescribed with Suboxone anywhere.
Because of your not set up to?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do you prescribe methadone treatment for your patients?
No. So family, the only folks who are licensed to prescribe methadone for addiction, they are in methadone clinics, that's a federal rule. So physicians are only allowed to prescribe methadone for pain, but we are not allowed to prescribe it for substance abuse.
Okay. So here's my question, then. How do you, as a primary care physician for someone in your community, how do you monitor your patient that you have time invested in under that program to ensure that their health is getting better, that they're doing well on this? Do you have that opportunity at all?
Are you speaking of the people in the methadone program or people who are on Suboxone?
Methadone.
So patients who are on methadone, for a patient of mine, are seen as any other patient, and their addiction is one of their medical conditions.
But you don't, you don't, you can't prescribe the methadone?
Correct.
Okay. And you don't monitor the amount of methadone?
That's right. That's handled by the methadone clinic. It doesn't mean it's not discussed with the patient and how things are going.
And can you discuss with the physician at the clinic what their treatment and dosage is on?
Yes. It's not very, it's very difficult. So there's not very good coordination between the two.
Thank you. Yes, Representative.
Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. This other letter was handed out as part of your testimony?
Yes.
I want you to read it. Can you just tell me what this is? Could you describe this?
Oh, yes, this is a letter on behalf of physicians in the state of Maine who, I remember the numerous organizations that I cited in the beginning, who are speaking in opposition and for the same reasons that you've already heard.
Thank you.
Representative Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back, Eileen Fingerman. I was going to ask you why you'd have a license and never use it, but that question has been asked and answered, so I'd just like to say it's nice to see you.
So I have, I mean, I have been prescribing Suboxone, as recently as last summer. However, the structure where I was didn't allow a kind of administrative support, and that program ended. So, and as I said, the majority of physicians who have the waiver to prescribe are not prescribing, and that's one of the biggest reasons. Administrative support necessary to do so well is tremendous.
Representative.
So again, Doctor, you know, for the work session, which is probably coming up at DHHS next week, we definitely will be talking about these issues, I'd love to hear from you, you know, you can send us the information if you don't want to come up here. I'd love to hear from anybody else here on a couple of issues. I'd like to hear ideas about how we can improve treatment, opiate treatment, and make it more efficient. And the other thing I'm really interested in, and I know this is a conversation about people who are in treatment and the best way to treat them, but, you know, I'm equally concerned about people who are not in treatment, who should be in treatment, and how we can make services available and encourage people to get into treatment. So again, any ideas you have on that and your professional experience and capacity? I'd be really happy to hear about that as we go into work sessions.
So I think one of the biggest areas to look into, like there are many patients who would like to be in Suboxone treatment, but there are not slots available. And I believe that in order to encourage those physicians who have the waiver to do so, or in or encourage other physicians to become certified to prescribe, there needs to be money directly geared towards these kinds of administrative costs that I'm talking about, that would allow practices to hire somebody specifically to do that work.
Thank you.
Yes, Representative.
Thank you. I have two questions. You said the administrative cost and prescribing of Suboxone. Could you just tell us those again, so urine testing?
Sure. So patients are required to be in regular counseling, and if the counseling is not on site, it needs to be an easy way to communicate with the counselors and find out if people are attending, how they're doing. So that's one piece. The second piece is, patients are required to have both urine tests when they come for their visit, as well as random urines, meaning they don't know, they're called, that day and said, today's your day to show up. So that requires a person to do all that phone call, it requires a person to follow up on the results of the urine test. Patients are also required to have their Suboxone counted, again, to prevent them from selling it. So those are all the various.
One other question. If somebody's looking for a physician that prescribes Suboxone, how do you go about doing that if they're so limited? How does that happen?
There are various websites to go to that will, that have physicians who sign up and say, yes, I'm open for taking patients. Also, word of mouth, people will call various clinics and say, find out who knows has taken them. Medications just get themselves on, maybe waitlist until they get it open.
Thank you.
I think another thing to realize is that although people on Suboxone are not seen daily the way methadone are, and you hear that they only need to be seen monthly, it's true, they can be given a script for one month, but in the beginning, they're seen weekly. So when you're thinking about the costs, they're seen weekly, and if they are not doing well at some point down the road, they're again brought back more often.
Thank you very much. So, then Jeff Tyner, Kat Kimble, and then Bruce Campbell.
Thank you very much. Thank you for saying that.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It seems that after our committee's assembly, cookies, I brought something nutritious for you. Representative Rotondo, and members of the Helping Human Services Committee, Senator Reiki, and Representative Cuttine, and members of the Helping Human Services Committee. I am Margaret Craven, and I'm here today to, as I am employed by John Murphy Homes, and representing specifically the Margaret Murphy Center for Children, to speak in opposition to cuts to Section 65 and Section 28 in the government budget specifically to the benefits manual of patient services. Investing in early childhood, as I understand it, is one of the most prudent investments we can make with our public dollars. It saves enormously on special education because kids have a chance to learn social skills and are able to learn in a developmentally appropriate window of time. Early childhood education will produce children who are ready for kindergarten and accelerate learning in age that is developmentally timely as they advance to school. Margaret Murphy Center serves children that are engaged from one to adolescence. I know that others are going to talk about the issue of cutting funding, continuing to have regulations that are very restrictive and very cumbersome adds a lot of effort and a lot of cost to providing the services in the community. There are indeed excessive regulations in the Section 65 especially, and I don't suppose that there was any examination to see if the outcomes are benefiting from all of those regulations. I know that this budget added a lot of dollars to address the waiting lists for people with intellectual disabilities, but it is not fair or even good policy to take the funding away from our most vulnerable folks, our kids. Early childhood intervention programs need to be fully funded, not cut, because that's where the successful outcomes are. I couldn't help but notice that all of the services that the department provides were requesting additional funding today, every single service. And the department still expects the private sector to provide services at lesser rates. You know, cutting $10 million from Section 65 or 28 is enormous in our community. And I want to thank you very, very much for listening today, and thank you for your hard work this session, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, Senator Craven. Can you be more specific in terms of how these programs, these intervention programs for children will be impacted with these costs? I want to focus on the children and about how we can.
The centers hire professional people, speech therapists, occupational therapists, obviously teachers who are very highly skilled, and other skilled providers. And if, you know, in order to retain those professionals, we have to be able to reimburse them at a wage where they're going to stay in Maine. And as I understand from a conversation that I had with my boss yesterday, he told me that all of the therapists that graduated from ORNO last year went out of state to be employed, and none of them stayed in Maine. And I think that that's really what's going to happen, more and more, that we're going to lose professional providers if we can't and will not reimburse them at a market rate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very nice to have you back.
Okay. Have an orange.
Thank you. After Mr. Tyner, we have Kat Kimble, Bruce Campbell, and then Dan Hamilton. Good afternoon, and welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. Greetings, Senator Hamper and Reiki, Cuttine, and Rotondo, representatives and distinguished members of the joint committees. For those of you that I have not yet had the pleasure to meet, my name is Jeff Tyner. I'm the chief clinical officer of Catholic Charities in Maine. And for many of those here, you know that we provide a broad array of services to thousands of Mainers across the state, and we have a particular and very unique mission-driven service that really aims to provide services to the most vulnerable among us. That is our purpose for being, as they say. While there's a number of significant challenges that have already been discussed here, and we could certainly delve into from our perspective, I'm here to talk about two specific pieces that impact the services that we provide, and that we certainly believe will have an adverse impact on how we deliver those services to the folks that we are committed to serving. More specifically, the proposed 10% section 65 services that we currently provide will further deplete programs that are already ailing financially under year-over-year increased costs and long stagnant reimbursement rates. Services, service areas which we have struggled mightily to recruit and retain staff and qualified credential staffing, which I think Senator Craven's comments, it's a nice segue to that, and that's something all of us have certainly struggled with. The service areas that are affected include evidence-based programming, whose fidelity standards drive favorable outcomes and contribute to essential, to the central theme of the value-based purchasing model. For evidence-based models, excuse me, bad day to forget my glasses. For evidence-based models whose current base structure does not fully account for the total cost of service delivery, a 10% cut is simply unimaginable for us in those areas. Stewardship is a core value of Catholic charities, and as such plays a very active and important role in how we manage and deliver our services. Our agency currently operates on a total indirect rate of less than 9%. Compare this to what is often considered the industry standard, 15%. This has been one of the few areas in these difficult times that we can reduce in order to ship limited funds to support the direct line of services. However, it's important to understand, an indirect rate, this low comes with its own costs. I would challenge any business model, be it for-profit, nonprofit, or state agencies for that matter, to really consider the operational implications of operating with a low indirect rate such as that. There's a very real point of diminishing returns considering these efforts to sustain quality services. With regard to the proposed informatic in touch to medication administration, or excuse me, medication management, resulting reduction to access which we fully anticipate would be the case will have a profound impact on all community-based behavioral health services. I cannot emphasize enough the role, the important role that access to sustainable psychiatric medication management plays in providing a critical foundation for clients in our communities. It does not matter that our agency itself does not provide this service. The clients we serve must have this resource in order to successfully participate in and optimize the benefits of our community-based behavioral health services. Further eliminating access to medication management already burdened with substantial waitlists in the community can only exacerbate the risks to individuals who struggle with mental illness. The headlines here in the state, as well as nationally, are heavily tragic events that unfolded as a direct result of untreated or undertreated individuals struggling with community. We cannot ignore the events that have led the patient to continue with care that we now have and continue to improve upon. I referenced stewardship a few moments ago, and the risk of being labeled a reductionist, what we're dealing with and the whole reason for all of us being here really comes down to that stewardship. It's an important and recurring theme in the political discourse that's taken on added import, obviously, in recent years, and this is as it should be. True stewardship is an ethic that embodies responsible planning and management of resources, and nowhere will we find that task more important than right here and right now. We as taxpayers, elected officials, appointed leaders, providers, and above all, those we serve expect it, deserve it, in fact, should be demanding that. And no, and just as important, true stewardship has demands of its own. It requires all of us to take the time to ask the questions, to explore the drivers and methodology behind the myriad of data points, graphs, and soundbites to establish accurate and reliable means of comparative analysis on which to base the determinations and valuation, to be candid and uncompromising in our overall understanding of the nature of the challenges our clients face and the complexity of the system that we're all trying to work in. These providers have an obligation to every stakeholder to demonstrate value-added transparency and accountability. And as I've shared with many of you before, Catholic charity strongly supports an accountable, robust, and efficient system of care that is clinically sound, data-driven, and physically responsible. To that end, we welcome the opportunity to provide you with any information that would be helpful in the process and the endeavor that you're taking on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tyner. Are there questions? Actually, I, oh, I'm sorry. Where was I?
I was just curious, I don't think we've got your testimony. We can, we can.
I just did in a world that I can certainly.
That'd be great. It was helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Tyner, if I understood you correctly, you've referred to historical events that led to our current community structure. Can you elaborate on what those historical events were?
I certainly, I mean, the cases that we have. I certainly, I mean, the cases that we've seen in the table that have to do with folks that either have not been treated or the services, the safety net that we have out in that community. I know prior to being from away, it's a confession, I was hoping not to make them broadcast.
Okay. We'll have you on.
Thank you very much. Up in Waterville is probably one of the examples that certainly stands out with the trash heat that occurred up there with the sisters. And that's something that certainly I had learned about, you know, through my affiliation with this organization, that certainly improves the living and unfold community. But no one here is not certainly aware of those pieces that come through, so keeping that safety net is very, very important. And I understand there's a lot of discernment around what these theoretical impacts will be around shifting over to pieces around management. I think you've heard a theme here from the testimony, and concern actually from this body around what the implications will really be in terms of, is there the capacity to absorb some of those shifts over? I know operationally, the cuts that we're talking about here would be very, very difficult and have true implications for our ability to deliver services.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Representative Sanders. Pat Kimball, then Bruce Campbell, the other members, and then you. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon. It's been a long afternoon, a long waiting for all of you. So good afternoon, Senator Hamper, Representative Brackey, Representative Tondo, Representative Pateen, and members of the Joint Standing Committee of Appropriation and Financial Affairs, and members of the Health and Human Services. My name is Pat Kimball, and I am the proud president of the Maine Association of Substance Abuse Providers, as well as the executive director for Wellspring, which is a small substance abuse and mental health agency located in Danone, Maine. I'm here today to oppose a annual budget which includes reductions that impact the services available for those with mental health issues and substance abuse disorders. Our state for many years has struggled with the offense of substance abuse disorders on our citizens and families. The estimated cost in 2002 was $1.18 billion. Three large factors driving substance abuse-related costs are crime deaths and medical care. Of that $1.18 billion price tag, only 3.3% goes to prevention, treatment, and recovery. The proposed budget would restrict and eliminate access to individuals and families seeking treatment and recovery. The cost of untreated alcohol and drug addiction is an additional cost to correction systems, hospitals, workplace, schools, social services, and other healthcare services, and not to mention the effects that it has on the families and the people that we love here in the state. All of these symptoms, or all of these symptoms, symptoms, all of these plagues, let's just put it that way, are burdened already with overriding costs. And with the proposal today, those costs are going to rise even more. MASAP has concerns with many things that are in this budget, including the elimination of methadone, reduction in Section 65, the tax on nonprofits, the reduction in funds for Healthy Maine, to only mention a few. The reduction and elimination of services will not sustain the medically appropriate services for people seeking medical help to move forward to long-term recovery. Here are two of the examples that we are talking about today. You heard a lot this morning about the elimination of methadone. You're talking of thousands of people, thousands of people who will not, will be without appropriate medical care. You've heard experts here today state that these are very two different medications. The proposal is that clients switch from methadone to Suboxone. We know that there is not a capacity here within the state to handle that amount of people. If this was any other health issue besides substance abuse, I'm sure most of us would be appalled at the fact that this many human beings would be without appropriate medical care. Instead, we sit here today and say that this is an okay thing for people who, in a lot of cases, aren't able to have a voice. Main Care, Section 65 is a huge other concern for us. This affects outpatient services as well as medication management. Main Care rates for outpatient services already are significantly lower than other healthcare insurers. I can assure you that many outpatient providers are really struggling, are already struggling with keeping their doors open, and one more reduction would be way too difficult for them to handle and to sustain their programs. The suggestion of the changes in medication management will also have a huge effect on substance abuse clients, as 85% of our clients have a co-occurring disorder. MASAP believes that to invest continually in prevention, treatment, and recovery is a necessary choice for Maine to not only save dollars but save lives. We are here today as a membership of 26 organizations to share with you our knowledge and work with you together in making decisions that are best for the citizens of Maine.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Representative. No.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Do you have conversations from time to time with people like yourself in other states? Do you have national organizations or meetings that you go to?
So we do. We have national organizations that MASAP actually sends a representative nationally to go. When we have the funds and opportunity, we go to different programs in order to speak to people in the state. But we have many via email, via, it would be short-sighted for us not to talk with other people, invite them to the state. Just recently, at a MASAP meeting, we had New Hampshire come in to talk about their new programs and what they're doing with their expansion of healthcare in the cover of substance use disorders.
Earlier today, in response to a question, the commissioner said, I believe, I'm correct, that some number of states don't, their Medicaid programs do not cover methadone. And I think she said it was 15 or 18, or somewhere between 15 and 20. So my question to you is, what in the world do people do in those states? Do they move out of state, or do they actually have different, a different treatment for substance abuse?
So don't quote me, because I'm certainly not an expert in this, but for the most part, the coverage of substance abuse services is an optional piece. Now, that's changed a little bit with healthcare reform, so I get I'm not an expert. So what happened in the past is that states contributed. For instance, New Hampshire did not have the ability to access the Medicaid funds for substance abuse treatment, but they put state funds in, and part of their budget included supporting programs. They're actually increasing recovery centers in New Hampshire and so forth. So other states that did not include that, what they did...